Good morning, everybody. We'll call this morning's meeting to order of the Clay County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, September 28th. The first item of business will be the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kaylee, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. Citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard on items not on the agenda today? Seeing none in the audience, do we have any online?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the approval of the bills and vouchers.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. Approval of minutes from September 14th.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. That brings us to our 8:35 item, COVID-19 update. Kathy and Jamie is here with us.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. How are we set up here? Okay. We'll start with some of the data, our usual data, and we're looking at the cases. So, the cases in Clay County, as you can see, from September 20th, they were 363, and September 27th now, they're 290, which, you know, might look good, but as Becky has stated, there's quite a lag in the number of reporting cases. There's, there's almost sometimes a five-day lag. So, it may not, for now, that's where the numbers are at, but of course, they're, they're going to change. So, we'll see what they look like next week. Active cases in Minnesota, September 20th is 18,000, and then, and then there's 1,000, about 1,200 more active cases as of this week. And then you look at Cass County, they've seen a little bit of an increase as well, so 528 last week and 619 this week for their cases, and also some more cases in, across the state of North Dakota. We're looking at the active cases by age, and, and as we've noted over the past few weeks, it's, you know, the younger age groups is what we're seeing for active cases. There's a few more in the 50-year-old range this week, but most of it is in the younger groups. That zero to four had dropped a little bit from last week, but otherwise, it's, it's kind of in that age range of the zero to four, whoops, sorry, in the, through the 40-year-olds, but we're seeing a little bit of an increase in, in the 50-year-old age range for this week.
Kathy, have we ever seen, even during the peak spikes of last fall, have we seen these high numbers of active cases in children? Compared to, compared to last fall?
Becky probably follows that closely with her case investigation?
Yeah. No, we have not seen the numbers that we're seeing now in the, in the young, young children and adolescent ages like we did last year.
Thank you.
So, then the cases by age, and we have the total cases on there, the 9,433, that's cumulative. Last week was 9,267. So, again, the age ranges are consistent on the cumulative And then the cases per week, so it's, we have just the July through current, so to just kind of show kind of the, the trend per week and what we're looking at for cases. And then we have this graph that shows from 2020 back in March and through current, so you can see kind of the, the whole trend from, from those periods of months where we're really seeing an increase. Okay, then go to Becky.
Good morning. We have unfortunately had a few more deaths in Clay County residents over the past few weeks, so I did include this chart again. We're now at a total of 97 deaths in our county. And then this graph depicts the number of COVID hospital admissions per week for Clay County residents. We're still seeing an elevated number of hospitalizations with numbers as high as they were last winter. We typically refer to hospitalizations as a lagging indicator of a resurgence of cases. So, usually, we'll see an increase in hospitalizations within two to three weeks of seeing a spike in cases. So, this is, of course, the concern that we're, we're facing now as we look ahead to the coming weeks with our, with our case numbers being elevated. And this slide breaks down recent hospitalizations of Clay County residents by age. So, as you can see in the pie charts, the majority, 65% of those that have been admitted to the hospital in Clay County are under the age of 65. The bar graph on the right shows the breakdown of the individual age groups of Clay County hospitalized cases. And so, the average age has been 54 since, since August 1st. And then this slide shows statewide hospitalization data for the state of North Dakota as of yesterday. So, there's currently 133 hospitalized due to COVID with 21 in the ICU. The number of hospitalized cases has increased from 120 last week, but the number in the ICU remains the same. The chart in the middle shows current hospitalizations broke down by age, and then the chart on the right shows the age groups of the total admissions throughout the pandemic. So, you can see that the majority of, has been in those over the age of 65, but we have recently begun to see an increase in pediatric and, and young adult admissions.
Just want to double check that I'm reading this right. So, according to your numbers, there's been two hospitalizations for Clay County residents 19 and under since August 1st, correct?
Correct.
Yes. And then just to maybe piggyback off Commissioner Campbell's question about the resurgence in young pediatric cases, currently, we have 102 active cases in Clay County from folks 19 and under, but historically, we've had 2,102 cases from 19 and under. If I read.
From the beginning of the pandemic.
Right. Just, am I, okay.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. I guess my, my question was more, because we knew that the 15-year-olds a while back were still a higher amount. My question was aimed more at the younger ones that, and when I see zero to four and, and the five-year-olds and those that are, that's the number that I was concerned, that I'm concerned about, where I see where that's going.
Right.
Those numbers, I don't think we, there is very few of those in the number that Commissioner Mojo mentioned about the 2,000 going all the way back.
Of 303.
Right. So, the majority of those that we're seeing now are, you know, on that cumulative pie, or cumulative bar graph are, are recent reported cases.
Yes. Commissioner Ebinger?
Would that be because of the Delta variant? Is it more of an impact on?
Yes.
On kids?
Yeah, that's what we're seeing.
Okay.
All right. And then this is the updated graphic that the Sanford Hospital System puts out on a weekly basis. So, this is updated as of September 21st. Again, the red people represent those that are not vaccinated, and the white represent those that are vaccinated. So, the overwhelming majority of hospital cases continue to be among the unvaccinated. And then of note, of the 34 patients that are on ventilators, only one is vaccinated.
Okay. I will report on the vaccines that we have been providing. So, for Clay County, the total number of doses provided by Clay County Public Health, 15,563, and last week, we provided just 28 doses of vaccine in our, in our clinic at the Family Service Center. And then looking at the next slide on the statewide data, people with at least one vaccine across Minnesota as of September 23rd, we're at 72.1%, and people with completed vaccine series statewide, 68.4%. So, continue to climb with vaccine opportunities. And then, just the breakdown as we've been looking at, it seems to be evening, evening out a little bit, and we've seen a very high percentage of the 65-plus, but things are starting to catch up as we are providing vaccine to the 12 and over. And then I'll just talk a little bit about what we have planned for this week. Last week, our, what we do is every other week, we do an evening clinic, and then we try to do a clinic over to the lunch hour. So, last week was our evening clinic, and then this week, we are doing a clinic from 10 to 2 at the Family Service Center. We do have Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine available this week, so we've, are providing a, a walk-in opportunity for that, and then also asking people to register. We're doing some second doses of Pfizer and Moderna. We have all three of those available this week. And then on Tues, today, later today, local public health and Minnesota Department of Health will have a discussion about planning for boosters. So, we do not have any booster schedule for this week, but later today, we'll find out what the plan is and vaccine availability for that, and they'll be working with our team to make some plans for that. And, right through?
Speaking of Department of Health, did you, have you heard any word on Cass, or Clay County Public Health with flu shots being able to, that you were waiting before to hear from?
Flu shots, we have our protocols. They've got, we've sent them off to our medical director, and so we are also planning for flu shots right now. So, working with not just our own, you know, employees, but with other employees, so they're reaching out and we're making plans. We have the two scheduled so far, and we'll continue to work on that.
Thank you.
And then just looking at the breakthrough cases on the next slide, breakthrough cases in Minnesota this week at point, 0.89%, and that's up from last week, which was 0.749%. And then breakthrough hospitalizations, little bit up, but still low at 0.047%, breakthrough deaths at 0.004%.
So, just to clarify, for, so, less than 1 out of 100 who have, who have had the vaccine is?
Right.
Coming down with COVID again?
And that's why we?
Or not again, but?
Right, right.
Testing positive.
And I, I think also important to note, the, the Sanford Hospital slide, the reason we're sharing that, because it shows the hospitalizations and the low numbers of vaccinated people. Anything you want to add to that, Becky?
I don't think so.
Okay. I have a question quickly.
Commissioner Mojo.
Do we have an estimate on the percent vaccinated of staff? No, we do not. I think as we move forward as a board, and I know there's some regulations that have been passed nationwide that are waiting on some OSHA approval, but I think it's important for us to get a, a good handle on what our estimate of staff vaccination is as we, you know, talk about what policies should look like. I think it's important to know that, considerably important because of what the breakthrough percentage is. Certainly, it, it doesn't take much to look at a graph and understand how to stay off of that event. I mean, if you're talking vaccine versus not, so I think that's important. The other thing, I recently have been part of two of my different committee assignments in talking about the new requirements that will be coming down, and for companies that have required testing already, there are several different instances of significant testing shortages. And so, knowing what may or may not happen, what are we doing to ensure there's testing availability? You know, Lakeland Mental Health, for instance, is trying to figure out if they're technically qualified under a healthcare setting or not, and has realized that there may be some significant shortfalls in that availability to get staff tested on a weekly basis. What are, what are we hearing?
You know, they still have the testing through Walgreens, and of course, we have the Vault testing site. The downfall of the Vault testing site is, it's not a rapid test, so you wait a little bit to get the results, and they are not currently open on the weekends as well. So, I think the challenge is for people is, how do they get a test after hours on the weekends, or during the weekend, Saturday and Sunday, because you're really limited if you can't get a test through Walgreens. We do know, I just heard yesterday, that the location over in Fargo, and they were accepting all, all Minnesota and North Dakota residents for testing, they've become overwhelmed because there's so many Minnesota residents going over there. So, we need to work on a plan. I need to work with MDH to see if there's any potential to get, we're really needing rapid tests in our county, because we just don't have those. And not to overwhelm the, you know, they want us to kind of work on something where we can, that there's not so many that are coming over to the Fargo site. So, I passed that on to my team yesterday, so we're gonna, we're gonna be in communication with MDH about what other opportunities there may be to get testing in Clay County. We're also going to see if maybe Vault can expand their hours. So, we're gonna have to work on some other opportunities for testing because there's a lot of demand now.
Well, and I know that the ARPA committee has talked briefly, even before the, maybe President Biden's regulation, about testing availability. And, you know, as we, again, back to the policy piece, as we figure out what a policy looks like for Clay County in terms of day of the week for testing, that certainly will be shaped dependent on where you can get that. And, and I think maybe, is it Wednesday this week, we have a committee meeting? You know, I think that really needs to be at the forefront of our discussion. If we can't get rapid tests, maybe we need to look at purchasing.
We have the availability in public health because we have a CLIA waiver, so it's a lab waiver. So, we have the ability to order some rapid tests, which I have done in preparation for our employees, if we need to get testing done, and when, when the board decides we'll do that. So, I have some available at this time. We're looking at some other test kits as well that we could potentially order, but it's limited. The numbers are limited. So, I, I wouldn't, we don't have the authority to order for the whole community, but I can order for our internal process.
Well, and, and I understand the conversation needs to get moving, but I, you know, Darren, looking at you, I think 650 employees roughly, if we're looking at what percentage of those are vaccinated, I mean, even 50%, I'm hopeful it's more close to that 70%, we need to start figuring out how many tests we would typically need on a weekly basis and go from there.
I would like to just go back in a couple, the testing in Clay County, how are those numbers going? Do we still have that facility open, right? Jamie?
We do, and I think Kathy gave you a copy of that. And so, that's what Kathy's talking about. The saliva testing is, it's great, it works well, but it's, it's a 24-hour turnaround. And so, that's why people are crossing the border because of the rapid test. And the saliva test is the PCR test, and it takes 24 hours for a turnaround time for the lab. But that, as of September 19th, the positivity rate was at 6.24%, and you can see the numbers there as far as the number of people that have come in, the breakdown of Minnesota. So, it's continuing to be used, but what, what changed is it was open seven days a week initially, and now it's Monday through Thursday. And so, when people want to test, you know, over the weekend to see what to do about Monday, school and work, they're going across the border to the rapid testing site.
So, what's the criteria that's recommended? What are the reasons why someone should go to that facility to get tested?
On the Minnesota side or the?
Yeah. Is it, is it because of potential close contact with, with someone?
Potential, basically. If you've, if you're vaccinated, you know, they, they say you can continue to do what you are doing, and also just really watch for symptoms. But it also, because we do have some breakthrough, is limited. It is, people are being encouraged to test three to five days after a known exposure. And so, that's really what it comes down to, especially for our kids who are not able to be vaccinated. A lot of parents are taking kids to be tested because of a known exposure.
And a known exposure, where they, where they know that that's happened, it's been 45 days, whether or not they, when they go in, they don't have the rapid test and they have to wait the 24 hours, the old standard guidance set was always given is that they remain quarantined until they get that information, isn't it?
Correct.
So, that, that hasn't changed?
It, well, there's some changes in terms of the school system, correct, Becky?
Right, right. Yeah. So, school districts are kind of doing what works for them, so we're not seeing it even across the board, you know, in terms of quarantining. The recommendations from the Minnesota Department of Health is, though, that if you are in close contact with someone that's tested positive with COVID, that you quarantine.
Until you can get a negative test?
Well, there's a few different options for, for quarantine. So, you can do a seven-day quarantine if you do test negative on a test, three to five days after exposure. You can do a 10-day quarantine, as long as you're not having symptoms, or the 14-day quarantine is still considered the safest.
And then, just briefly, how are we doing on contact tracing? I haven't heard much about that lately. Are we still, is that, is that even more significant now since the Delta variant came back on us here?
Yeah, we've brought on seven new staff, which I'm working to get trained in, but we are struggling to keep up with the amount of, of cases that we're seeing.
And then lastly, back on the tests, the over-the-counter tests that people can get, is that, is that something that's reliable, or?
Go ahead, Becky.
Becky, do you want to take that?
I can. Not as reliable as what you would get tested at a pharmacy or clinic or, or testing site. And also, if you get a positive result with an over-the-counter test kit, it is not reported to the state health department, so that makes it a challenge for us, because then those, those individuals are not counted in our case counts, and we can't do the case investigation and the contact tracing.
Any other questions?
So?
No. Okay.
Some boosters are out for the Pfizer, and for those, I think we're gonna go back to the, to the discussion we had with immunizations over there. If someone gets a booster in North Dakota, they should go to our website and link into the state and report it. Is, am I recalling that correctly, so that we can get our count on who's had a booster?
If the booster is through the health system, so if it's through Sanford or Essentia, it'll eventually get to our immunization registry.
If it's through Cass County?
Correct.
It would also.
Right. It's the pharmacies that we were not able to get that information.
Okay, thank you.
I said a booster, so you're having a discussion with MDH today?
Correct.
I think that's probably called for that.
Mm-hmm.
Is it just Pfizer that's gonna prove the booster?
Correct.
Whether?
Right. Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson are still going through the process. They'll eventually have their boosters, but not yet. And also, the, the, the five to 11-year-olds, they're also, you know, still in the studies about getting that vaccine for that age group. So, you know, there's an anticipation that that would come in a month or two, but, so we should be seeing that as well. Well, there's plenty of vaccine available, so it will be, we need the manpower.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, we'll need, we'll need people. Obviously, we'll be doing flu shots as well as if, if MDH is gonna request that we do boosters, so we're doing flu shots and boosters, and, and then maybe doing the, the younger age children as well, and those that still are getting that vaccine. So, there'll be, I, I think we could be really ramping up with our, our vaccines, so that may be a thing we can talk about at our, our, our meeting on Wednesday.
Commissioner Kaylee, and then Commissioner Mojo.
Kathy, I was wondering if you've been in contact with our local hospitals to see how they're feeling about this ramp up in cases and increase in hospitalizations? How are they doing staffing-wise?
Yeah. Thanks, Commissioner Kaylee and, and Mr. Chair. We, we have been in contact with the hospitals. Their, their concern is, of course, that they're at capacity and looking at the need to, you know, maybe not accept some patients and having them go to other places. So, their, their real concern is the number of cases they're seeing. In addition to all of the other cases that they normally have, there's, you know, seeing the increase in COVID cases, but they're also concerned about staffing. There's certainly a, a concern that they can keep up. Staff are overwhelmed, they're hitting breaking points and, and tough to recruit staff. So, they have a real concern about staffing. So, it's twofold for the hospital systems with, with the, just the ramp up of cases and then, and then staffing. So, that could be a, a real issue, and, and their concern is just that this has not gone away. COVID has not gone away. And in fact, speaking of hospital systems, they really want to push masking. They're, they're feeling like we, we have some prevention measures that we should be taking. Number one, obviously, is get the people vaccinated that have not had the vaccines yet. So, that's really the primary, because that's really kind of the lead in what, how this is being spread. So, really, to just continue to push people to get vaccinated, and, and with all the research, I mean, the vaccines are safe, so, you know, it's, it's a challenge to get people to understand that this is a, a real high priority. And the other thing is the prevention measures about social distancing and masking. So, they, they ask that we require masks in public places. That's a challenge to implement because we don't have an emergency declaration, so we don't have authority to push the masking in, in all of the businesses. But masking, if you're in, in-person meetings, in public health and in social services, I can speak for those two departments, we're masking when we're doing visits, home visits. Most of the time, we're trying to do remote, so all of our work is still pretty remote. And so, that's kind of what the push is, to try to do as much remote as you can, and then when you're in groups, really should be masking. If you have meetings, especially when you can't social distance, particularly when you can't social distance, so, and then in public spaces. So, that's their, their request is that we would do a requirement of mask. We have people coming into our Family Service Center building that aren't masking, so I think that would be an important.
Did you say that or not?
They're, they're not, right, because it's recommended, so the, the majority of people are not masking. So, that might be a recommendation to require masks for people that come into our buildings. Minnesota SEP required masks starting this week, and of course, our dental, and they're our tenant in our Family Service Center building, and then the dentals requiring masks, obviously. They've been requiring masks since the beginning. So, it, it might be a prudent measure based on the hospitalizations and MDH recommendation that we require masks for public spaces and meetings and for visitors that come into our buildings. At this point, we expect, what our epidemiologists are saying at MDH is, we expect to see, you know, kind of the peak fairly soon, maybe a few weeks. It's hard to predict an exact time we might peak, but for this interim period of time, it would be just a, a good prevention measure to help with even breakthrough cases. We're seeing a number of those within our county employees as well. So, that's, that's a recommendation from the hospital systems.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I, in talking with some members at Sanford and hearing their concerns in terms of the fact that they're bringing back those non-essential surgeries now, and so they're kind of dealing with that and a surge at the same time, what are you hearing? You know, I recall it takes about two days to set up that field hospital at the Fargo Dome. What are you hearing in terms of, of if that's a possibility? I certainly know that it's challenging because Bison Football is also important in Fargo, but what are you hearing?
You know, I think they're looking at those options and working through that logistically. Right now, they have an area that they can expand to, and I don't remember what the, what the bed count would be, but they have, they have a potential for an expansion in a facility. It wasn't the, it wasn't the Fargo Dome.
1,500, I think, is what the Fargo Dome had before, but it's.
Yeah. But I know that would be an option, and they would certainly work with the National Guard. Guard and all of that if they needed. They haven't mentioned that publicly, and they haven't mentioned it to us yet, that that's what they're looking at, but I wouldn't be surprised behind the scenes if they're actually thinking about Plan B, C, and D.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Commissioner Kaylee.
Given the stress to our local hospital systems and what we've heard, that this is now a very strong recommendation from MDH and others that we institute a masking policy in public places, I would like to move that we require masks in all public spaces in county-owned buildings, and that we would reevaluate that after a fourteen-day period of decline in our case rate, pending other recommendations from our local public health. That fourteen-day seems like a good number, since that's the standard quarantine period that we were seeing before, so.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kaylee and second by Commissioner Ebbinghaus. I have a question, and it gets to, this was brought up before, and the motion was made and seconded by the same two commissioners, and I know in the past, we've had taken a position that it would require somebody different to make that motion.
I think, Mr. Chair, to, so I just did a little research, so I, so the position I would have is that the motion is in order.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think the the, when I look at Roberts Rule's order, the chair would have to declare that that motion is not in order, but specifically that, I'm just going right off there, that no main motion is ordered that presents substantially the same question as a motion that was finally disposed of earlier in the same session, being rejected, by being rejected. A main motion that was thus disposed of can, however, be renewed, that is, the same question can be introduced again as if new at any later session. So I think what Mr. Chair might be thinking of in other times past is where it was the same session brought up again, the whole idea is to really dispose of something, but if it's a new session.
And where I've seen, Mr. Meltler, where I've seen this come up more often, I think, too, is in regards to planning and zoning, applications and processes, and the idea in mind there that if something is rejected, you just can't, somebody just can't just keep bringing up the same thing all the time. And I just wanted to make sure, I certainly won't deem this out of order. I I won't do that as board chair, I just wanted to.
And, Mr. Chair, you are correct, and that was the point I was making, there are things in planning and zoning, or just like, you know, legislative session, if a bill has been introduced, rejected, it's it's one year usually, but this is not the same matter in my position, looking at this as a new session, so.
I would like to just ask for some clarification on the motion itself. I, you know, within our facilities, and this goes to, we've done an awful lot of things since COVID started, and we went to an awful lot of investments to to make it safer for both our employees and our citizens who come in, and it seems to me that the the way the motion reads would be that masks would have to be worn in all public places, which could in, which the way that I read the motion, it would mean even within an employee's confined personal private office space, and I and I certainly don't think we need to do that. And I, so I, so I just, there has to be some clarification there, as far as I'm concerned, that that it's basically in the common areas, right? Kathy, is that what you'd be referring to, the common areas of of public spaces?
Correct.
You know, whether you're, if you're going to walk the halls or that type of thing, right?
Always, lobbies, yep.
Is that the intent of your motion?
Yes, that's the intent.
And then, and then, I, just one step further. So so all of our, the motion would be, would also mean that anybody who comes into our facilities would also, that would, how about all of our staff who are required to go out to on house visits? I know when there is the emergency order declared, there was basically no home visits, except for situations of concern, whether it's child protection issues or those types of things. How do you feel, if I, if it's appropriate for me to ask this before we make a vote on this, but how do you feel, Kathy, about allowing our county employees to be going into homes? And I think of of, you know, anybody in social services that might be have to go in, including those who are going into daycare facilities, which right now, we're seeing these big spikes in. What are your feelings on that?
And and we've worked with, and Jamie can jump in as well, we we do a lot of home visits in public health, and social services does a lot of home visits as well. Our WIC program currently is still under a waiver, so that program is through December, they aren't seeing kids and families in the office at all. That waiver was through the state, so they are only doing telephone calls, and and people are still getting their WIC vouchers. We're not able to weigh and measure and and take hemoglobin's and do those kinds of things, so, but they're doing what they can, and that's that's under that state and federal waiver. Our home visit programs, and Jamie can speak to this, as well as social services, we've been in contact with Rhonda in regards to home visits, and and if there's a need to do home visits, we did recommend masks, that they mask as well as the person that they're visiting. So I know that social services was going to follow that. It wasn't a requirement, they just thought it was in the best interest of everyone to mask, and Jamie, maybe can talk about our home visiting.
Jamie.
I think it's important to note that we are seeing the most vulnerable citizens in the community, and so, yes, we have been following the practice of masking, social distancing as much as possible, but more importantly, limiting visits to those that are essential. So whether it's public health staff or social services, we are we are following that policy, and we've worked with social services on the policy. There are times when it's not avoidable, and then we are distancing as much as possible and masking.
Since the, what the emergency order was lifted, the Department of Health and Human Services, I think they kind of basically set set some guidelines or some or regulations or whatever you want to call it regarding home visits, and that no longer exists, so does the, do we as a county have the ability to do things on our own?
So it is still in place when it comes to those that we serve that are on medical assistance, so there are still some things in, whether it's Minnesota Department of Health or DHS, that that help us to continue to make, to do remote visits and still receive reimbursement. So we're meeting our criteria at the federal level is what allows us to follow that, and so we are doing that, and and that certainly makes it much easier for us to focus on essential visits, so vulnerable adult, to child protection, those are when we are going into the homes because it's essential. Otherwise, we are doing our assessments, our teaching remotely.
Thank you. Commissioner Ebbinghaus.
I genuinely do not like this motion. I don't like masks, but but the numbers don't lie, and we have a public health staff that has gotten us through a very difficult eighteen months, at at great strain to them and to the to to their ability to keep up, but they've been relentless. And I know their loathes to come in and make a strong recommendation to elected officials, but the information they provided us speaks for itself. And maybe this, we can hope, this is is the fourth quarter, and we just got to buckle down and deal with this. We can hope that that as immunizations get higher and precautions are taken, maybe we'll get through this winter and we'll get ahead of this thing, but right now, we're not. And I'm hearing loud and clear from them that this is a recommendation on what we can do. It's not a public mask mandate, this is a mandate for the facilities of Clay County, and it's a reasonable, structured one. And, you know, just got to go with the information from the people that got us through the worst of this up to this point, and try and, you know, I hate to beat the football analogy into the ground, but it works for me, this is the fourth quarter, and you don't let up, or you're going to have a problem. So, you know, I I hope my colleagues will appreciate the fact that this is good for our employees, even though it's an inconvenience, certainly good for the public that comes in here, and it's good policy.
Thanks. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Commissioner Ebbinghaus is all about the football analogies, since his Razorbacks have, you know, redeemed redeemed themselves, but I appreciate that. I have an issue with the motion just for a couple of reasons. I think that, one, I'm particularly bothered by adding a policy change when it was not advertising the agenda. I I think that that is a way to not allow our staff and citizens time to understand the conversations at hat or at hand. And two, I I think that when this was brought before us before, I was very clear that I wanted us to make sure our PIC had an opportunity to look at the policy and make sure that we were being consistent in at what percentage of staff positivity rate or quarantine rate do we go into a ma masking recommend or requirement? And I don't know if we've had those, is, as I had conversations with our HR director yesterday, of the six hundred and fifteen, I misquoted myself earlier, staff that we have, we currently have eight out with COVID, closed quarantine, or positivity. And so I I'm a little concerned at at making a policy change when we have one percent of staff or one percent of Clay County that are currently with the two hundred and ninety-one, or not two hundred and ninety-one, the two hundred and ninety out. And I think that I'm not not ignoring what you're saying. I am so thankful for the work that your staff has done through all of this, but I think as government, we have to be very careful about being consistent. And if if we have ten percent of Clay County out with influenza, and it's very contagious, are we going to require a masking requirement in buildings? And so I, it just opens us up if we're not being consistent. So my other clarification is, does this require, what about our our jail, our juvenile center? Are they all masking at all times? What is, I mean, there's just so many unknowns about this. I'm concerned that we haven't had adequate time. Steve, have you have you come up with a policy?
Madam Chair, their PIC has not come up with a policy, no.
So I just, this has been a board that has been very careful about making sure that we are addressing the needs. I still would maintain that we come up with a policy, knowing what you're saying, we need to come up with a policy, and then we can address it in an advertised fashion that makes more sense. We also spent lots of money that we had allocated to us to ensure that there was social distancing that would keep staff and the public safe. And so I I think, going back to what I said about vaccination rates with our staff, you know, if if we're seeing two hundred and fifty-six that have had COVID throughout this entire time of tracking it since April of 2020, and are we looking at seventy percent of staff that are vaccinated, we we need to encourage our staff to get vaccinated so that we don't have to have these conversations.
Are you?
Am I done?
Yeah.
God, Brad asks me all the time, are you done?
I'm just.
I don't know if I'm done.
I'm trying to be polite.
I I think so.
Thank you. Mr. Kaylee.
I hear what you're saying, Jenny, but this isn't just about our staff, it's about the public. The public is in and out of these buildings constantly, they're attending meetings, they're receiving services, those are the people that we need to be protecting, those are the people that are in the spaces where social distancing cannot be maintained, and that is what this motion is speaking to.
I completely understand, and that's why we spent the hundreds of thousands of dollars to make sure that all services could be accessed online in a non-contact fashion.
Mr. Ebbinghaus.
Just in 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 looking at consistency, City Morehead, City Fargo, Cass County, all reimplemented masks within their facilities. We had a long period of time where we had masking policies for the county, and yeah, I agree, phenomenal efforts were made to make our workplaces safer, but this is this is not the the first round that our employees have had with dealing with a mask situation, and it should be reasonably easy to implement. This is a week by week, if you look at these numbers, I mean, we can we can put it off for another two or three weeks, but we're just aggravating the situation. We can make it a little better within our workspace, within what we control, and I think that some expediency is appropriate. Other other governments here in our Cass-Clay County area have done it, and I certainly don't see where we can implement it with some expediency.
Thank you. I, I can't ignore when our public health department makes a strong recommendation, and I I I can't ignore, I often sometimes worry that if you don't go in accordance with a recommendation by something as serious as this, some of the ramifications of not doing it down the road, and I don't want to take chances on that. I I agree with almost everything that Commissioner Mojo said. I'm very nervous about this, doing this, like she said, without being as an agenda item regarding a policy. However, I believe we're in the emergency time. We've been watching this on a week, that's why you're here every week, is we want you here every week, and I'm I'm talking about our public health department, so that we get updates as this thing either gets better or worsens. There may be a slight indication that this week over last week, there was a slight improvement. I'm extremely nervous about the young children that are going on and and how it's spreading to them. I, you know, the motion said that this would be reviewed in two weeks, and I think that would allow us the time to come up with if it's going to continue, and we haven't really talked about what is what is going to be our determinationing factor to remove it. You know, we we said we'll review it in two weeks, what are we reviewing, and when is when it, when is, when is it going to be satisfactory to us to remove it? I haven't heard that yet. So in two weeks' time, unless we come up with some things, then I probably will not support continuing it. So this is a two-week deal, as far as I'm concerned, I'm going to vote in favor of the motion this morning, and I'm going to do it with that in mind, that this is two weeks, and it gives us time, if we have to have a special PIC meeting, we'll have a special PIC meeting, and we'll get the data going and move forward from there. But I am not going to vote against a, especially when I hear the word "strong" recommendation from public health to do this. I have some concerns that this doesn't do enough in terms of some of our employees who are have to leave facilities to go to other places, both from the standpoint of their safety and the safety of those who they're going to see. And quite frankly, I'm referring to daycares. And nothing in this motion deals with with that whatsoever, so, and that's where all of these kids are, that that there's potential more risk.
So I have, I've, anybody else have any comments on the motion? Seeing none, would you like to roll call vote on this? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the same?
Aye.
Motion carried. And that, I, one last thing on that, I think we better have that effective tomorrow. We can't, because we have, we probably have a lot of people here today that maybe not have their materials, so if that, is that okay?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Kathy, could you also work with GIS in developing exactly the word verbiage you'd want on those signs?
Sure. So I, our correctional facility and our juvenile detention facility, masking?
I've not had recent conversation, I see Justin's here. In our previous conversations, I know that our our juvenile counseling staff and correction staff staff were masking up when they were with the, with the residents and inmates, and so I don't know if that practice has changed at all on your end or not.
Justin, I, I think if you're going to talk, we, we need to grab a mic.
So the staff at the jail are, are wearing masks while they're in the facility, from the time they enter the facility. That was something we changed just a couple of weeks ago due to a, a staff coming down with COVID. But I guess I do have a question as far as what, I mean, having an inmate population required to wear masks becomes a very, very difficult thing to enforce. And when we're talking about individuals within a county building, where do, where do we stand as far as, and how do we start to begin to enforce that?
And Mr. Chair, and Commissioners, our detox is in the same boat. We have people coming and going constantly. Our masking for detox is the staff. We don't mask the clients. The staff are masked.
So we just voted on a policy, again, that we haven't ironed out details, and I agree with you, I just, if you have a shortage of staff anyways, and you're dealing with populations that are not necessarily excited about being in there, have fun.
Well, we, again, those, I think, Steve and Darren, let's get a PIC meeting set up ASAP, please, and we will, we'll, we'll get some clarification on, and we can maybe come back even before the 14 days to, that doesn't mean that we can't revise what we've done and, and give further instruction as to what should be done. Kathy, you'll be part of that PIC meeting.
Okay. Alrighty.
All right. Anything else on that? All right, well, there you go, that was a.
Thank you.
Good 10-minute update on COVID. Thank you all. All right. Request to hire full-time motor vehicle staff. Morning, Lori.
Good morning.
I'll see you with you this morning. Good morning.
It's like, so we, just a little bit of an update, we are having a bit of an issue at, at Motor Vehicle right now. They are out of power and have been since 2:00 this morning. More in public services there, they're trying to nail down if it's a mall issue or a more in public service issue. It's still not clear at what's happening, but they are still out of power. Anyway, I'm here to request to hire a full-time person. Earlier in the year, in April, you approved a variable hour hire until October 1st as a check-in person, just to alleviate some of the wait times that we were seeing at Motor Vehicle. And honestly, it has worked out really, really well. If, if you want to take a peek at the, your handout that looks like this, I kind of did a summary of the number of transactions and the wait times. The, with the red headings, those are previous to the variable hour coming onboard, and those are the wait times and the number of transactions. And then, starting in June, you can see our transactions went up significantly and our wait times were basically cut in half. And so, and if you've been watching the Morehead fantastic site, significant improvement. And so I'm here to, just to request that we make that a permanent full-time position, and we can pay for that by the increased number of transactions that are coming through. The lowest possible reimbursement or increase in fees would be $38,000, but that's a very modest amount. So it's more like a, till the end of the year, it's a break-even point for that payment. So my request would be to make that a permanent full-time position.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I, this is the result of you listening to the concerns that you were hearing in the, in the community, and I just, the, the grit that you put in to address those concerns, to make it better, to find out how to streamline a process that isn't always super fun, you really did it. I brought my 15-year-old this summer to get his permit, and that check-in person really helped streamline the process instead of getting up and waiting for an hour only to find out that we had the wrong documents, able to address that right away. And so I, I will enthusiastically make the motion to support this.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Kaylee, and I'll third that motion. I, I, but I, you know, I, so you, you handed us this document here, which is, was very helpful, and by the way, our PIC committee reviewed all this and certainly recommends what motion was just made. But I just want to point out what some of these recent things that we've done through DMV and through your leadership efforts in it. Back in January, we had a waiting time of 31 minutes and 19 seconds, 37:14 in February, even as early as last May, 31 minutes and 47 seconds. June, that went down to 13 minutes and 28 seconds. July, 10 minutes and 7 seconds. August, 11 minutes and 34 seconds, so somebody must have held up the show a little bit there for that. And then, and then in September, down to 7 minutes and 6 seconds wait time. That's, that's an extremely improved process.
Yeah, it really has made a big difference. We did make some changes in the appointment schedule too, but overall, it, everything has just really improved out there.
And that's not to say that some issues might create longer wait times, for example, when the power's out in the building today. Everybody's going to be waiting a long time for that, but.
It's going to be about an hour and 27 minutes right now.
So, but anyway, it's, congratulations on, on, I think, something that really benefits all of our citizens, and it's excellent to see. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign, motion carried. All right.
Thank you so much.
You didn't even have to talk, Chelsea.
I know. You put me on the spot. Thank you.
All right, Justin. We have a request to fill vacancies for four full-time correction officers.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Yes, I am here to request to fill four full-time vacancies. Over the last couple of weeks, I've, I've had a couple resignations, two individuals left for Red River Regional Dispatch, another one left for a position with Social Services, and I have a notice of retirement at the end of October. So they're all within our budget for 2021, and in our 2022 budget, they are part of our DOC staffing plan, so I would just ask that we fill those, those vacancies.
So, Justin, you do do exit interviews then, right? When you get these?
I sit down with just about every one of the staff and have conversations with them, yes.
Okay. I think, I think it's important to note, you know, I think you have, obviously, two are leaving for another, for dispatch, you said?
Yes.
Well, that's, that's also a positive for us because we also have such a hard time filling those positions, so that's a positive thing. But I, I think the main thing that we always have to watch out for is, is there policy issues or something like that that causes them to leave? And you're not really seeing anything like that.
I don't believe that's the issue. I believe just the stress of the job itself, working in a correctional facility is an extremely stressful job, and, you know, I think people are, are to the point, a lot of the individuals that we've seen recently leave have been individuals we hired kind of at the, the opening of, of the new facility. If your board remembers, we hired 16 new officers when we opened the facility. They're kind of reaching their three-year mark now with us and kind of deciding, do I make a career out of this or do I move on to something different? Some of them are deciding they want to make a career out of this, and some of them are just deciding, you know, law enforcement maybe isn't, isn't what they want to do anymore.
Well, and I think it's, you know, my, my time and experience involved with it is also that, that's basically correctional office in that area, sometimes they get in there and they use that as a stepping stone to move into whether it's other departments within the sheriff's office or what have you. So it's, it's, it's one that's always and forever had some significant turnover.
Yeah, it, we've seen over the years, the eight years I've been in administration, we've seen a high turnover rate, not anything near what we've seen recently. I just think kind of, some of the, the views of law enforcement and stuff have, have some things weighing on people's minds, and whether they want to continue in this profession, I think plays a big factor. I think another thing that plays a big factor is there's jobs open everywhere. So if you want to try something new at this point, now's the time to go try something new.
And the compensation levels have changed in a lot of other.
Correct.
Fields. So all of these, the, all of these then would be positions that would not require backfill, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Ebinger.
Have anybody on a list, or is this going to be starting from ground zero?
So as the board will remember, been here quite a few times over the last several months, we had 10 open full-time positions, we got it down to two, and these now bump it back up to six. So we are still struggling to find applicants. We do have interviews scheduled for later this week, which I think will get a couple good candidates out of those interviews. I, I will say I've already received another resignation, I'll be here next week at the board, received that late. So, I mean, we, we are keeping ahead of the curve a little bit here. We were feeling really, really good about where we were, getting the numbers down to only two open positions. These four don't help in that, but I, I am confident we can get there, it's just, it's hard to determine, is this, is this the new norm, or is this just something we're seeing because of the times we're in right now?
I can just comment, having worked in a correctional facility for a brief period of my career, one, not one that was nearly as professionally or well-run as, as yours is. It's a challenging career, but if somebody's looking for a job with a future and is willing to come in and take, take on the challenge, anybody out there really needs to go to our website and apply. I've, I've been impressed with it, even in the old facility, that your staff and you and your predecessor really ran a professional, well-run organization, and I think it'd be a great opportunity for people who have an interest in that field and they really need to give it a look.
Appreciate that.
All right, well, we have a request.
Move that this request be approved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same? Motion carried. Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
Can I ask Justin a question before he walks away?
Absolutely.
Are we COVID testing everyone that comes in at intake?
We are. So we, we use a, a rapid test through MDH that they provide us. It is a, as was mentioned earlier, no, no rapid tests are as, as nice as, and as accurate as the PCR tests, but MDH assures me that these tests are very, very accurate, and we have seen that to be true. So yes, everyone that's admitted into the facility is tested. If they end up sitting in our intake for a while, whether that's an additional 12 hours or an additional day or two, they're then tested again before they move back to general population, just to ensure that they didn't come down with it or are now testing positive before moving them back.
Then one last question, is the correctional facility considered a public space?
Would guess not, no.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, the lobby would be, and, but within the facility itself, I, I would guess, no, that is a secure detention facility.
Thank you.
You had mentioned earlier that your staff wears them, but not necessarily inmates wear masks. Do you have available to inmates masks if they preferred to wear them?
Yeah, so we, we do have quite a significant stock of, of surgical masks. We do provide all new intakes with a mask. We encourage them all to wear them, and then all the staff have been notified, as well as the inmates have been notified, that if at any point they wish to have a mask, they, all they need to do is ask.
Are there any security issues with masks?
Um.
I mean, security and maybe safety issues?
I don't want to say no, there are certain individuals we need to be concerned about having masks. Just maybe not having one mask, but if all of a sudden they end up with a bunch of them and they're tearing the ear loops off and forming them into a rope or something like that, that can be concerning.
That's.
There are small little metal pieces within, kind of the nose pieces. I don't know that you could do much with them, but you get a couple of them, you might be able to try to do something, whether that's shove it in a electrical outlet or attempt to pick a lock, which you're going to have no success doing whatsoever. But it could create some damage to the facility.
All right. Did we vote? Yeah, we did, yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Committee reports. Commissioner Mojo, would you like to start this morning?
I have to pull up an agenda, sorry, I'm not ready.
Maybe I can, if you're not.
Back to me.
Yep. Commissioner Ebinger, are you ready to go? Okay.
Wednesday, the 22nd, I attended, virtually attended the FM Diversion Finance Committee meeting. Pretty much regular business, there was approval of bills, finance report, currently is 40% expended for the year. It is so, that far under as compared because of the land purchase, things that are pending and yet not expended. Director's report, again, we discussed currently under budget and why. Reviewed the proposed 2022 budget, it's going to be up from the 2021 budget. The 2021 was 31.2 million, this will be 33 million. General Counsel Shockley presented a number of MOUs, and a MIRA agreement with Menkota, MOUs with Pleasant Township, the Cass County Water and T-Mobile Sprint, all of these were approved by the committee. And we discussed the financial close, which is the second part of the agreement with the Triple P provider, and that is set to take place on the 14th of October. And there's continuing progress in property acquisition. On Thursday, the 23rd, I attended the Greater Fargo-Morehead EDC Executive Committee meeting. We have a nominating committee that was put together last year, and currently we think that, no, we have a nominating committee that we need to put together, where, that's probably going to be assigned to the Governance Committee that was put together last year to look at nominations for new board members. Had a long discussion about fueling our future, some of the Master Talent Plan, part of that included the Ignite Program, which we had a presentation on here with the chamber, and the Valley Prosperity Partnership and Grand Farm. We have got a November 9 strategic planning set up, and over the next several weeks, all the board members are going to be completing an over, the telephone interview of about 30 minutes with the strategic planning folks, and we provided with a list of questions on that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo, are you ready? All right.
Last week, I attended the Planning Commission meeting, we had four hearings, three of them were requests, or two of them were requests for a home occupation permit. There was concern regarding one of them, but overall felt that we could address those concerns with conditions. So those were approved, and then there was a condition for construction to expand a daycare on Highway 75, that request was approved. And then Schmitt &amp; Sons Building is requesting an interim use permit expansion, they're currently storing several flood buyout homes there, that was approved. Good to note that those will be built, two of them will be built in Clay County, adding to the tax base. We had an update from Adam Oltenberg from MetroCog on the Clay County Comprehensive Plan update, and then talked about a draft community profile. I attended the Prairie Lakes Committee. I attended the Prairie Lakes, uh, Committee Meeting, um, as Commissioner Campbell's alternate. Commissioner Campbell will do the update on that as he does so well. And then the next day had a SWAC committee update, uh, good conversations in terms of, um, fees out at the landfill and what's appropriate and, and when increases may be warranted. I think the, the overall consensus is to wait until our new facility is up and, and running and then address those concerns going forward. Had the MCC JPA update, uh, really good conversations. Um, we had a representative, um, from, uh, attorney for some landowners, um, hearing their concerns. And I, I just think the flexibility that has continued to be out there to, um, work with landowners however we can is really important. So, um, good updates there and then had some approvals to some, uh, initial appraisals. That evening I attended the, uh, Community Action Prairie Lakes Committee Meeting. Good updates, um, from Emma on the housing, uh, programs. They've continued to exceed and recreate their, um, service areas during the pandemic to those who, who need it most and, uh, continuing to make sure that, um, they're, uh, they're helping to, um, inform the public of necessary and existing programs that are out there to help with that. So I appreciate their work on that. It, it certainly is difficult, but they're doing a great job. And CAP LP was, uh, just recently voted the nonprofit of the year, an exceptional honor for them. They do great work. And it was out at the Belsley site, which is their new, um, administration will be out there. They expanded what they currently had. Yesterday I attended the Lakeland Mental Health Committee Meeting. Great updates from all of them there, continuing to talk a lot about what the new executive orders mean in terms of, of testing requirements and vaccination requirements. They are concerned that they will have approximately 20 to 30% of their professional level staff leave because of some of those requirements. Uh, as you probably recall, I've talked significantly about, um, the difficulty in recruiting staff before our workforce crunch. That was a, a difficulty there. They've done really great work in terms of making sure that access is limited or access is available on a short-term basis. But they're concerned that their access for mental health services will exceed 30, 60 days if they have a staff turnover. So, um, continuing to work with how they can, um, work with the new guidance and do the best there. But their program, um, mar- margins remain remarkable. They did adjust those a little bit, but continuing to see most programs in the black. So that is good news there. And then last evening I attended the Buffalo Red Watershed District Meeting. Uh, several concerns from, um, citizens in regards to, uh, some tiling issues and some drainage, uh, concerns. Uh, the board, uh, will, uh, have continued conversations with those residents going forward.
Is that on a particular project?
Uh, no, just some ditch issues and drainage slough. So just normal issues.
Thank you.
Um, there was one resident that came forward, um, that has currently purchased some, um, some property that is by the Georgetown Project and George, uh, the Buffalo Red Watershed owns the southern part. And then he owns, um, what used to be a platted subdivision. And in conversation with the, the city of Morehead, he's unable to build their home on that unless a road is vacated because it's, was an existing subdivision. So the city of Morehead had asked this resident to go to the Buffalo Red Watershed and just ask for them to, um, abandon the road. And so the watershed will continue to have some discussion. I recommended they talk to our county engineer and our planning and zoning staff. I know that gets really tricky because those properties to the south are purchased with bonding dollars. And currently they can't do anything with them, but, um, certainly as we've talked about those properties that we own, you just don't know what the legislature may or may not require going forward. So, um, I think good, uh, good conversations. I do know that those are the properties on the Buffalo Red that the city of Morehead recently talked about at the Planning Commission to graze, uh, with, uh, sheep herd to make sure they're mitigating some of the weeds and brush. So, um, certainly doing whatever they can to deal with issues. And then great conversation, um, Eric, uh, Jones from Houston has about five options to deal with the Stony Creek Project that's been in conversation for a really long time and certainly, um, is on the forefront because they did receive about $1.5 million from the state of Minnesota. Uh, try, trying to figure out how we best mitigate, um, those flooding needs while also, um, figuring out how to retain ownership or management of some of those lands. So more to come on that. And that, I believe, concludes my report.
Can I just, clarification, you were talking about landowner in, up around, in Georgetown with the.
I misspoke, uh, Oakport.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
I was wondering why the city of Morehead would have anything.
My apologies.
I just, just, yeah. Okay, Commissioner Kaylee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Tuesday of last week, I attended the Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council. Um, that meeting was held at a Place for Hope in Morehead. Big thank you to them for hosting that. Um, and we had a discussion, continued discussion about the creation of some subcommittees to address, um, the work of that council, um, more effectively. And following the meeting, then we also got a tour of a Place for Hope and saw their food pantry, um, which they've been operating. That food shelf is open, um, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday from 11 to 3. We're also by appointment, um, and you can just call them and make an appointment for that. The food that they're getting is from, um, the Great Plains Food Bank. And it was just a wonderful expansion of service in that area. I also attended, um, the CAP LP Board Meeting that Commissioner Mojo reported on. Um, I did want to note that, um, a staff member, Maria Steen, was just honored at their national conference. And this was a really big deal. Maria received the National Advocacy Award for her work championing early childhood educators and voter registration. This is like a once in a lifetime thing. And even better, um, one of their former clients, Jamie Roach, won an award as well. She won the Sergeant Shriver Personal Achievement Award for the work she's done to improve her life, inspire the community. So it was really beautiful to see, um, a staff member as well as, um, one of our community members that has just totally transformed her life, um, with the help of that organization. So that was great. Um, another thing I wrote down that I thought was worth sharing is, um, when Emma Schmidt was giving her report on, um, the housing services that they provide. On average, they're serving 25 households a month with homeless outreach services. This is where staff go out, they meet people that are living in their cars, um, and other unhoused places. So there's a big need in our community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. On September 21st, I had a PIC committee meeting. And at that meeting, we did discuss the request to move the very, our position with the MV to full-time. And we did talk a little bit about what we did today as well. Uh, we talked a little bit more about, uh, I had asked Darren to provide us his thoughts on some of the, uh, Ignite Program and how, how that, how that might work from a, from his department standpoint, HR. Uh, we did discuss a little bit about, uh, moving forward as Commissioner Mojo had asked some questions today regarding, uh, the, the potential policy coming down from the national government regarding mandatory vaccination and testing mandates. So we, we've had some preliminary discussions about, uh, what that process might look like. Had it, has it come into, when it comes into play? And then we did discuss further some areas regarding ARPA, uh, in looking at what we're going to do with some of this cultural issues that have been presented to us. And so we continue to, um, discuss that as well. That same day I had a executive meeting of the Diversion Authority. And we talked about follow-up on our full Diversion Authority Leadership Workshop. We talked about the Director of Lands and Compliance and the Director of Finance, the hiring of those positions they're moving forward. Uh, we talked about P3 communication protocols. Uh, we talked about, a little bit about the resolution authorizing the financial close that Commissioner Ebinger talked about in his report. And we reviewed the draft budget for 2022. And on Wednesday, the 22nd, I was in perm for the Prairie Lakes Meeting. That facility continues to run very well. There's really not a lot to talk about there. We did have a discussion about hiring a consultant to review our health insurance. Or not, excuse me, not our health insurance, but our, um, liability and building and liability insurance moving forward to make sure that we're keeping an adequate policy and premium. And on the Thursday morning, we had a solid waste meeting. And again, we had a update from Tom from Construction Engineers regarding the Resource Recovery Project. Uh, we had a, quite a discussion on tipping fees with, that Brett had brought forward. That was, uh, a well-engaged discussion. Uh, there was no, at this time, there was no proposed or no proposed change to, uh, fees. And it was primarily regarding mattresses and how we're dealing with those. Uh, we got an, uh, an update from Brett Rice on the landfill activities. And then, uh, Kirk also gave some other solid waste updates in the meeting. And for, that also, then that same day, I had the MCC JPA meeting of which Commissioner Mojo has reported. We did approve four appraisals and one replacement housing differential payment. And for those of you who are unaware of that, not only do you give a, uh, do we offer, um, through an appraisal, you know, for a buyout, but then we also have some other things that come into play that's outside of that, that might have to do with relocation issues and, and, uh, if they have other underlying conditions associated with that property. So there's an additional amount that might be offered to them. And that one is up to a certain amount, but they have to use it in terms of their relocation. We did approve, we had some significant discussion regarding the environmental monitoring easements. And we did approve a process that's similar to, uh, we want, we like to stay consistent with our people on the other side of the river in terms of the Cass County Joint Water Resource District. And so we basically approved the same process that they had in regards to what we were offering. I think we're, we're down to 127, um, easements that we were not successful in obtaining. And of course, that can be very expensive in terms of litigation issues, bringing it forward, uh, that way. And so we did approve a change in how we, in what those offers are. And not only will that go to those property owners, but it will go, also go to all the ones that we had already approved. So everybody will still be treated equitably and fairly on that issue. And, and so we're hoping that that action will greatly reduce the eminent domain costs that we might have in the future. And, and based on the discussion that we had and attorneys for some of those clients, I think that that action might prove to be very beneficial for us moving forward. Uh, then we, uh, that same day, then we had the, um, I think that covers, oh, we did, we did have some discussion about, uh, land swap issues that there's some proposals out there. And we need to make sure that we stay consistent with what our policy is on that. We've had, uh, we had a recommendation to, or a suggestion by one client that they'd like to have some organic farmland. And, and we did not take action on that at that time because we felt that we still need to pay attention to what, what our policy is as a diversion authority. Cause the MCC JPA really can't go outside of what those policies are. So we need to be, need to make sure that what they offer was, would be consistent with our policy. Uh, then, um, in that afternoon, we had the Diversion Authority Board Meeting itself. And, and Commissioner Ebinger is, had, well, actually you didn't make that one, did you? So you were at the, you were, yeah, you had a conflict with that. So, but that one, we really, we did, again, we went over the, uh, 2022 preliminary budget, which you reported on to the Finance Committee. We talked about the financial close that's set to be done in, in October 14th, I think is the date of that. And once that's done, then things are going to really start to move forward. And, uh, then we also did review, um, Director Joel Paulson's, um, look at his organizational chart moving forward and how that's going to look. There's, that's going to potentially change quite a bit moving forward. And that concludes my report. Steve?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, last Tuesday, I attended the PIC Committee that's, uh, uncovered, um, by yourself. On the 22nd, I participated, uh, county management. We had COVID update from Kathy, uh, vaccine mandates. So we talked about the 2022 budget, provided an insurance update and also, uh, remote work documentation. Uh, on the 22nd, uh, met, uh, with some of our staff in regards to spa- space adjustments at the Family Service Center. Uh, that afternoon I met with, uh, Dave Overbow, uh, and some updates, uh, from, uh, what some of the other counties are doing, uh, related to ARPA funding, uh, in highway. Uh, the, uh, 23rd, I participated in the SWAC that's been covered by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo. On that afternoon, I met with Sheriff Empteen on a series of issues. Uh, and also participated in the MCC JPA meeting that's been covered by Commissioner Campbell again and Commissioner Mojo. Uh, Friday, worked on a number of department head updates, uh, that are upcoming this week. Would just, uh, follow up again, uh, Jamie's comments from earlier that there will be another vaccination clinic on the 30th from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at the Family Service Center with all three, um, uh, vaccines available. Um, just piggybacking, uh, off, uh, Commissioner Kaylee's comments, just note that today, the Great Plains Food Bank, uh, is going to have a mobile, their mobile food pantry with fresh vegetables, baking items and, and boxed goods, uh, in our Clay County communities. Uh, they just wrapped up here within Holly. They're moving to Yulin, uh, from 10:45 to 11:15. They'll be in Felton, uh, from 12:45 to 1:15. In Glendon from 2:15 to 2:45. Uh, in Dilworth from 3:45 to 5:15. And then Morehead, uh, from 5:15 or 4:30 to 5:15, five, excuse me, 4:30 to 5:30. Uh, again, just to note, we did, uh, set our rural city and county meeting for October 12th. Uh, that, uh, note has been sent out to our, our cities. Uh, that's going to be on the 12th from 4 to 6 p.m. here in this room. And if you have any agenda items that you'd like to see me add, uh, please let me know. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I do want to give, go back to my report. I do want to mention that, um, back to perm for a minute on the Prairie Lake Solid Waste, we did receive some really good news in, in terms of Clay County. We had been, we had been, uh, having a deficit amount for tons to that facility. And what that means is we were, we were still required to pay, but we weren't delivering those loads. There were several reasons behind that, but the good news is we've, as I learned from the administrator there that Clay County will be caught up by the end of the year. So that's, that's exciting news when you figure we've been running at a, at one point we were, um, at a negative 969 tons. That we weren't delivering, but we were still paying for, based on our, like, partnership agreement. So that's really good news. And then also, uh, regarding the rural. And then also regarding the rural cities, with the changes there, I might have a conflict at the beginning of that. So Commissioner Mojo, you might have to open that up for, meeting for us. And then I'll get there as soon as I can that day. Brian, do you have anything for us this morning? Okay, Colleen, anything else? All right, we are adjourned.